Things on. Okay, okay, I think we're ready to get started, so we'll go ahead and begin this second session. This is on solid waste operations. And we have the Department of Ecology.
Formerly Department of Health. So Chuck gave us strict instructions to be done explicitly, so I'm going to try to be succinct and, but I can talk solid waste all day and all night, so just know you're bored. Um, my name's Joel Loscher, I'm the Solid Waste Operations Manager. We are, team used to be housed in public health, we're in a transition moving to the Clark County Public Works Department, where we lived at one point, and now they're shifting us back. So it's a better place for us for a lot of reasons, but just know that uh, we're in that transition and as the draft that I know you're all going to read diligently every day from now on, you'll say our teams are referred to being in public health, but we are living in the public work. And I'm here also with our program assistants, so like you introduce yourself.
My name is Alex Almory.
And she's also partnering and supporting the North County Transfer Station Siting Study, so she'll be coming and giving future updates on that too. So I want to just give you a little like face recognition, so you know for those future updates. Can we just go right into it?
Well, I guess I was going to introduce you, but you're. It's always gonna be efficient. I would say he's probably truly grateful that we're not talking about parking or speed limits today. So there you go. There's our interview.
Yeah. Um, all right, well, the biggest news of the day is that we have just drafted the solid waste management plan in front of you. Now, the Department of Ecology requires us to be in compliance, the RCWs are listed in the PowerPoint, I'll get there. But the biggest thing is, this is a huge accomplishment for our team. I joined the team as a manager in two thousand and twenty-three, I was with the team as an analyst prior to that for about five years. So I'm very familiar with our contracts and all of the compliance requirements, and we went through a struggle during COVID. So our plan was out of, it is currently sort of out of compliance. It's due to ecology every five years, and we're obligated to work with the cities. Because as the lead planner, like the county's the lead for solid waste planning, we're required to work with you to join the planning process, which we did in two thousand and twenty-three. And Chuck and I worked to do that in our local, to get this up and running, to get this in compliance. So when I came into this position in two thousand and twenty-three, plan was looking pretty bad, and um, there was a lot of turnover, we had a lot of management turnover, we had staff turnover, we had all the things that I'm sure everyone experienced during COVID. And so we kind of started from scratch in two thousand and twenty-three. And what we decided, what I decided was to bring the work in-house and have our staff help write this, and just have a consultant assist in the design process. So in September of two thousand and twenty-three, we did a photo shoot. I really wanted to have the plan represent the beauty of our county and like how wonderful and lucky we are to live here. And so you'll see in the plan reflections of that as a full. So we did that photo shoot and we had the design team work with considerations for accommodations for ADA things like color blindness and different things. We also have an electronic version that allows for us to easily update it in the future. So I wanted to just kind of preface our presentation with that. We've made a lot of accomplishments, we've brought this to our solid waste advisory commission. They approved this last week, which we're thrilled about. So we're coming to using, our advisory commission has approved this, our staff have approved that. We are going through the process of a final courtesy review with ecology. We expect, they gave us a little sneak peek that they will accept it. And then we'll come to you in June or July with the resolution of adoption. And then in a, we expect in October to bring all of those resolutions of adoption to the Clark County Council. By October of twenty, October twenty-five of twenty-five, that's ecology's due date for us. So that's just sort of a quick little overview of what you're looking at in front of you. And I'm going to run through a little bit more in detail. There's a few other topics that we have that are mentioned in the plan that we're going to go over today. We are doing so many projects because, like I'm sure you're experiencing, there's a lot of backlog. So we had a North County Transfer Station that we tried to cite, or well, I suppose Waste Connections tried to cite it in two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, it didn't work out. And for a lot of reasons, I wasn't around then, I couldn't speak to it. But we know that we need another transfer station in the county, there's a real need. And something that has been discussed at Richfield Council meetings, and it was brought up in public commenting on the solid waste management plan. So we'll speak to that a little bit, we just got that going, the county approved that in January. So we just got started on that process in February. So not a huge amount of updates or work that's happened yet. But I wanted to just mention that we know that the public comments is very important on that. We know that public outreach is huge, and Amanda's going to be coming forward with myself and a few other project people on updates on that transfer station citing study. Something else that I want to just mention is that we recently completed a contract with Columbia Resource Company, which is a subsidiary of Waste Connections. This contract was completed in September of last year, brought to council, made public. We circulated it with all the public works directors in the city. But that contract for transfer station operations yielded a capital commitment from Waste Connections for about sixty-three million dollars over the course of the next eight years to improve the transfer stations, which is a huge accomplishment, we're thrilled about. Our contract also gives us the option to consider public ownership of the transfer stations and move towards a regional ownership structure. So we're evaluating our options for that as well. And we'll be bringing that study to you later, this year probably August, September. So lots of future updates, this is just your sneak peek. You're going to read the plan, you're going to get all ready, and then when we come back, you're going to drill us with questions. We also have our HHW household hazardous waste event coming up at your cleanup day event this weekend. So I know Chuck's already filled you up, filled you in on all of that, but just in case there was questions about that event that's going on this weekend too. So moving forward to slide three. Um, yeah, this one, perfect. So if you memorize RCWs because that's a passion project or anything like that, they are here for you. Um, we, these are also listed in the interlokal agreement that we have with the city of Richfield. So these are the references, and these are the requirements for the county and why we do solid waste. So we are required to keep the plan in a current condition. Right now, our plan was last signed and adopted in two thousand and fifteen. Ecology still considers it in current condition. I don't, but Ecology does, which is good. So we're not out of, we're not in, we're not out of compliance with Ecology, but in, in the sense of how much the waste system has changed and the recycling systems and products have changed since in the last ten years, that our current plan does not reflect all those changes, this plan does, so we're really proud of that. We are expecting to make an amendment to the plan pretty quickly. So I think, once we get this adopted in October, we're going to move right away to a few amendments because there's some things that are changing pretty rapidly. I know this is a big week for the legislative session, and so there's going to be some changes to EPR, and we're following all of the solid waste steps, so I'll expect to have some updates for you about that next time we're here too. Uh, another change, the legislative impacts of organic management laws. Those heavily impacted what we put in our solid waste management plan. And so those keep changing and the requirements change, and so we'll be adding this to the next slide. I love this graphic, we have a gal on our team who is just beyond talented, and unfortunately, she's been thick with a cough, and I, she didn't want to come and cough all over everyone, so I said, okay, I'm going to do this for you. But she did an amazing job, she's a technical writer and helped assist in writing the plan. So we saved a lot of money by not having a consultant write the plan for us. And her skills and her gifts are sort of reflected in her slide here as well. So this is just a quick snapshot of the history of solid waste planning in Clark County. So I think the biggest takeaways too is that where we are right now, the next plan will be due in two thousand and thirty. And in a five-year planning cycle, that's right away, we got to get right to it. So next slide. This diagram is reflected in the Department of Ecology's current guidelines, which were last done in two thousand and ten. So they're due for a refresh, and we've been, we've been in part of the Department of Ecology's updating, updating of their guidelines. Those guidelines are going to be published in June of this year. So we've also been dancing a dance of trying to comply with our new plan with the guidelines that aren't published yet. So there's been a lot of back and forth, and it's been a real challenge. We're really happy with where we landed, and I think even in this update to Ecology's diagram, we can kind of see that the planning process is ongoing, just like any other plan compliance and everything else. Um, next slide. I sort of already went over the process for updating the plan and where we are at. But the big, the big takeaway is that two thousand and twenty-three was when we published the regional solid waste system study. So I came to the City of Richfield Council and presented on that study, that study included as an appendix, if you're curious and want to read it. Even if you just read the summary, it'll give you an overview of what the county did to sort of assess what our regional system looks like. And we added a JRM, he was our consultant that did sort of an assessment on, here's what, here's a high level look at what capital projects, what maintenance needs we have. Because if the county or the county and the cities as a regional group decide to buy the transfer stations, we don't want to be buying a shell. We don't want to be buying structures that are really rundown and haven't been maintained. So it was important for us to do that study to get an initial look. What that study yielded, which I'm sure a lot of you know, is we need to do another study. So in two thousand and twenty-three, we did the triennial inspections, which was a engineer-specific conditional assessment to kind of give us a further idea of what, what do these uh, transfer stations really need in terms of maintenance and capital improvements, because they're old. And like I said, the waste has changed, our population has changed. So from that, um, I brought those, I brought that information to the Richfield, we talked at council, we did ILAs for planning with all of our cities. So all of these topics were brought in two thousand and twenty-three. But even in two thousand and twenty-three, I said, we're going to start to see a lot of each other as these things come up, because this is important work that we're doing as we're looking at becoming a regional system. Or at least entertaining, enter, uh, looking at studies to see if that's the best option. Next slide. Uh, last year's reflected here and part of, you know, what we did to continue our update process. A lot of last year was related to working with CIPA, working with the Washington Utilities Transportation Commission, getting updates, um, providing the preliminary draft for public comment. So we went through the whole public comment period, public hearing, all of that. Next slide. Here's an example of some progress I feel like we made in terms of public commenting. We created a really easy spreadsheet form that people could use their phones to text with the QR code and then answer some questions in terms of comments they had or specific chapters they wanted to comment on. All of the comments are reflected in the plan too, so you can see those as an appendix, and you can see our response to public comment. Um, that's a requirement for Ecology. Next slide. And that's, you know, a little bit more detailed, but essentially just that. Some comments were not things that we could address immediately, because we're under a time constraint. Ecology and their new guideline said, once you submit it to Ecology, you have a certain amount of, you have about, and once you receive your edits from Ecology, you have one year to get the plan adopted. So Ecology provided those to us October twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-four, and that started the clock. So we have October twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty-five to get it adopted by all the cities and the county. So um, that's, that was new, part of the new guideline, and that really also kind of drove how we had to answer comments. Because maybe something we would have spent an extra little bit of time on, but under this time constraint, we said, you know what, we will address that in an amendment, or we'll address that in a future plan update. But I think those are fairly minimal, so you'll see those as you look to the appendix. Next slide, or next slide, next slide, I'm already moving on to the next one. All right, um, I, I'm a big fan of sort of like, show me where I am on the map. So coming back to our diagram from Ecology, it's just saying, here's where we are in our plan and process. So we're working towards adopting the plan and getting Ecology's final review, though we are so close to implementation. Next slide. Um, yeah, and more information here, just public and Ecology comments happen process. Uh, the Ecology Courtesy Review should be completed by mid next month. We have quarterly meetings with our Solid Waste Advisory Commission, and they are recorded, so you can go on our website, we can provide you the link. Uh, you're welcome to attend at any time their public meeting. If you're very passionate about solid waste, we frequently open positions up and are available. I can't remember who we have representing Richfield right now off the top of my head, but um, that's also another way if you want to get more information, or if you want to get more information before we are here again. You're always welcome to attend SWAP. Um, and we're, so our next SWAP meeting is May first. And we expect to begin resolutions of adoption based on when we get feedback from Ecology, either June or July. So we expect summers to be, we're going to go on tour with all of our cities and get the recent adoptions passed. Next slide. Again, just another little timeline. We wanted to provide enough diagrams that we can really give you a quick snapshot of what's happening, because there's a lot of complexity and a lot of reasons why we had to do things when we did them. But at least you can kind of get an idea of, here's what the next six months looks like, and here's each step that we need to take. So April, May, uh, like I said, Ecology's doing their courtesy review. This summer, June to August, we're doing those resolutions of adoption. September, we're tentatively scheduled for Clark County Council and Adoption. And then October is that date that I mentioned, and October twenty-fifth to get to Ecology. And that wraps up our chat about the solid waste management plan before I shift topics. So any questions for us?
Um, what, what? The advantage of new running with solid waste connections is simple.
Yeah, it's a really good question, and there's so many different reasons. I think we benefit from economy scale, so we also benefit from having one united front when we're managing a system. So when we talk about the cost benefit analysis that we're working on, we're looking at, well, if the county was to become a solid waste district or some sort of, you know, even if it was a division of public works that owned the transfer station, that brings in public jobs, that brings in ways to manage the system and sort of benefit um, what sort of materials are being taken in. We have more control over the materials that get taken in, but we also get more control over procurement. So right now, the transfer stations are privately owned, they're privately operated. There's only so much insight that we're able to get in terms of their profit and their financials. And so if we move to public ownership, we're not driven by having to have profits. We're able to bring the rates down, benefit the residents, and then also drive what materials are getting processed, so benefit the environment. So that's a really high level overview, and we're going to do a much better presentation on that. But I think the advantages of public ownership are pretty, you know, I would say there's very strong advocacy for that. We recently met with the, with Spokane County. And Spokane County owns their transfer stations, but they weren't privately operating them. And on the surface, that seems like a great idea, like, okay, great, yeah, we can publicly own them, but we're going to keep the rates over to privately operate. But the problem is similar to when you own a home and you have renters. They didn't really treat the, uh, treat everything well. And then typically, I think just being public servants, we know that you, you often don't have enough administrative staff to really manage the difficult contracts that come along with private operations. So in talking to Spokane County, they said, well, we, they, they own the transfer stations, and then for ten years, they had private operations where they just contracted out the operation. And then in last November, they went to public operations, and they're seeing huge savings. And they're projecting huge savings, and that, the projections are lining up with the estimates. And they're already saying, we wish we would have never done private operations. We wish we would have went straight to public based on the control that you have and how those facilities are managed. So I don't hope that headline answers you.
One more question. Any idea as to going the way you're going to go? What, what could we anticipate as a savings? Any idea?
Oh, I can't wait to hear this, because we, um, we just went through the, we have a model that our consultant Parametrics is drafting for us. The complexity that goes into a model of estimating that, I just couldn't even fathom. I was like, well, this is a, you know, I, I went to business school, but this is a level of economics that's new for me. So we expect to have that drafted in August, September. And that was just so you know, that was a request from the City of Richfield, from Camus, from Waschewo. I think almost every city council said, hey, public ownership sounds great, but show me the dollars. Like, show me the bottom line that it's actually going to be beneficial. And when we presented on the regional solid waste system study, we didn't have that information. And I wasn't a manager that did the, the draft of the scope of work for that consultant at the time, so I couldn't explain why you wouldn't have that. Um, and so what we decided was that was going to be the most important thing to get information so cities could make that decision. So I'll, I'll talk briefly on that, on that too, not in depth, but we will, we are planning on coming back and we can do another study session. We can do a council session, however you want us to bring that information. We also are going to be inviting each city to participate in separate sessions with our consultants. You can ask the, ask the consultant directly, because sometimes it's good to see their model and to see, um, you, you can ask questions on why something is excluded or included.
Would that extend up to like collection, do you like, we believe, collection?
So, um, I think the impact to collection, I think it can be very confusing with our system because Waste Connections is on both sides. So typically, it's, you know, the hauler's a separate company. I think we're also in a unique situation where our, where we process our recycling materials is housed in the transfer station in West Van, in West Vancouver. And that, uh, we refer to that as Material Recovery Facility or a MRF. And because the MRF is located inside the transfer station, it's small, and it causes contamination, the machinery is old. And so there's an impact on that too. Something we negotiated when we signed our transfer, our, our transfer station operations contract last fall was that we have a tight deadline to get that MRF outside of the transfer station. So to have a new MRF that's run privately, we don't want to get in the business of owning MRFs and the volatility of the commodities and the markets for recycling materials. So I'm only mentioning that because it does impact hauling when you're, when you are pulling out the recyclables processing from a transfer station. So you have the transfer station that's handling your municipal solid waste, your MSW. And then separately, you have another entity handling recyclables processing, and then you can separate that out. So that also is going to have a huge impact. Depending on the outcome of what happens with our decision to negotiate a new MRF, and we're still deciding on what that looks like right now, that will impact hauling potentially, that could potentially impact hauling costs. Because if we have someone that needs to come in, and a private entity needs to come in and build a new MRF and do all that, that might impact rates slightly, but we would be bringing that for approval to our cities as well as the solid waste planners. So that's just something that is some, uh, if the City of Vancouver on, uh, on Monday is going to be speaking to that on, at their council meeting.
Yes, so there's nineteen remedial site locations in Richfield. How are those identified by the Department of Ecology Toxic Cleanup Program, and who generally pays for those?
That is a really good question, and I think that does fall more into the public health side of the house. So um, I'm going to reach out to our solid waste enforcement team, and I can ask them, and I can follow up with Chuck.
Okay, that's a great, thank you.
It's a good question.
Other questions, council, before we move on to the next portion? Cool.
How long are we doing this time? Okay, I warned you, we can talk a lot, these are going to be quick. Well, that was our big, that was our big heavy lift. Um, like I said, our North County Transfer Sees, our North County Recycling and Transfer Station Siting Study. So this was brought to council for approval, the contract was brought to council for approval end of January, with the, our consultant being Parametrics. So we didn't pick this off until February. And we have, what we decided and what I presented at our Clark County Council meeting was to fund the project through phase one, and then bring it back to council and bring it back around for updates to see where we land at phase one. So although the true schedule is much more extended with multiple phases, I thought it was important to just give you an update in terms of, this is what we're looking at. So for phase one, and because I think there's a lot of questions in terms of, well, what kind of public outreach you're doing, what, how are you getting involved? How are you, how are you picking places, where are you looking? And so right now, they're developing selection criteria, fatal flaw criteria, and you can go through the task description list, so just kind of at a high level of like, where are we at in sort of this first stage of phase one? Um, we'll come, we're anticipating coming back with a further update, like I said, June and July, when we come with the solid waste management plan. Right now, our focus is developing a citing review committee, and that citing review committee is internal to the county so that we're reaching out to all the different people that might be involved in public works to try to, like we said uh, here, just kind of identify those fatal flaws, maybe issues with permitting, issues that are maybe unforeseen to our group, but um, looking at those specialists and kind of getting an idea of whether or not to move forward. Um, we recently had a presentation from our consultant from Parametrics, and these were some statements that they made in that presentation that I felt like were really important to communicate to you all. So the complicated piece of citing a transfer station is that they're essential public facilities, they're essential for a lot of reasons. And thinking about them as forever facilities, it's not something that we're like, oh, we're going to put it here for twenty years on. So like, once you finally get it there, it's there for good. And so, um, really having that lens as we work on citing criteria and looking at where this might be. And we also want to make sure that transfer stations are a good neighbor. So considering the impact of the surrounding area, and that that's a concern, we know that comes up with the public and a council. So just wanted to make sure that you all know that we have those guiding principles with the initial work we're doing. And we'll be, if you hear questions from your residents that you can say, no, we're, we're in, you know, we're in talks with the county, they're going to let us know, you're going to meet our public, we have a public, um, gosh, the acronym's escaping me. Public Information, yeah, so we have a public information plan, and it's a PIP, which I'm like, that's not how I've ever heard PIP. But that, that team is really experienced, and they'll be coming, giving a really nice overview, more of a, at a resident level.
So as part of that, we have asked if the county could consider adding a shared decan facility on this site, and we have one down on the water, right, it's, I mean, we're old now, fifty, sixty. Um, so it's, it's, it's very, so, well, it's very outdated, but um, we're eventually going to need to replace that with something that does meet the needs. Um, and we know with some of the other jurisdictions in North Clark County are kind of facing the same thing. What do you do when you run your street sweeper, and where do you put that? Um, so we are looking at the possibility of a shared decan facility in conjunction with the North County Transfer Site.
Any other questions before we move on? We got one more, and then we'll like, both bring a book, two more? I'm sorry. And we already touched on this, the cost benefit analysis. So like I mentioned, the desire for this was really born out of going to, the county coming to city councils, presenting on the regional solid waste system study, and being, and cities concerned about the absence of really concrete financials in terms of why we should make a decision on public ownership. Also, the regional system study, as you'll see in the appendix where it's listed in the plan, uh, they sort of brought together a lot of options for ownerships in a, in a way that was confusing when we communicated out. So I acknowledged that, and then also decided to tease out just three options, you know, just like going to the store, Timmy's Toothpaste is overwhelming. Oh, we just said, here, these are the real concrete decisions that need to be made. Option one is a status quo, so do we just keep doing what we're doing because we're happy with it? And, you know, honestly, Waste Connections is a good, they're a good partner, they do a good job, we're not, they're not doing anything wrong. So it's something to consider in terms of, well, maybe the best option is to do what we're doing. So that is an option that we're considering. In comparing option one with option two and three, we want to consider what is different. So the things that would be the same in terms of our positions or staffing or anything, if it's same across, then it's not considered as the difference. And that's an aside to mention. But option two is, yes, we take ownership of the transfer stations, and I don't know if I mentioned this specifically, but we can own the transfer stations per our contract for a dollar. So that's a huge, whether it's actually a dollar or not, but it's a dollar per transfer station. And in the last study, or the last, I think they were doing sort of a rough, you know, a rough estimate saying that if we were to build those today, it would be about two hundred million. So really thinking about the benefit of being able to purchase something for virtually nothing um, that are forever facilities. So just, we'll bring, we'll bring more when we bring that financial model, but just having those numbers kind of in your head of, you know, the MSA that we signed last year is still held, and that option for ownership is also mentioned in terms of our future projections, so that's mentioned in the solid waste management plan too. So option one is our status quo, option two is we just take ownership, and then we contract everything off. So nothing has to change, we don't have a whole bunch of additional county staff or multiple staff. We don't have to do much else other than we could competitively procure services. So that brings the opportunity to bring in a different operator, get better pricing. Not to say that exactly what happens, but there's the opportunity to bring competitive procured operation in. And then option three is to publicly own and publicly operate and what that looks like. And then option three is to publicly own and publicly operate and what that looks like. Next slide. I wanted to just mention some of these, which is the non-monetary considerations like regional system control, operational flexibility, the risk, direct responsibility for operations, um, and, uh, maintenance, capital improvements, renewals and replacements, and consistency with North County Recycling Transfer Station ownership. Those are all considerations that are part of the study that aren't directly monetary considerations that needed to be, um, part of the consideration. Next slide. Milestone base. And we are actually ahead of schedule with this, which never happens on projects. So we're thrilled. We've got the draft for Forma last week. And so that wasn't due to us until June tenth and we are already looking, uh, oh no, it was, it would do April thirtieth. Um, and we got it last week. So a few weeks ahead of schedule. Still thrilled. And so we're looking at that and kind of getting an idea of what went into it and what, what changes we might need to make. And so we'll have that finalized by June tenth. I know unfortunately Chuck's going to be retiring, so he'll be leaving our, uh, steering committee meeting. But our next steering committee meeting, our regional solid waste system steering committee is comprised of all the public works directors in the city. And those public works directors vote and make decisions on, uh, aspects of solid waste management. So, so that steering committee meeting either in June or July will be bringing this prior to when it comes to all of the cities. So that's the ARSI meeting mentioned in, uh, the schedule here in July. And then like I said, final analysis report, we expect it to be August, September. We still expect to be able to bring an update to you when we come for the solid waste management plan in June and July. Next slide. And we made it to cleanup day. We're thirty-three. Any questions on the financial, uh, cost benefit analysis that we're working on? It's pretty straightforward.
One more please.
Yeah.
Can you provide any assurance that when all of this is done, the end user, all of us will not see an increase in the monthly charge that is astronomical? Right now, for whatever reason, the charge is appropriate, the service is incredible. Uh, I'm just concerned about.
Oh, as you should be. And I think, um, I want to make sure I'm answering your question in the right way. So when you say the charges, are you talking about when you bring, um, something to the transfer station? Or are you talking about the charges that you receive at the, at the moment?
If I were to take something to the station and my monthly charge for the pickup.
Yeah. And across the state, if you look at tipping fees, so I'll start with the charges that are at the transfer, transfer station. We actually have, I think, the third lowest in the whole state, which is surprising. If you go to a transfer station in Portland, I believe it's like, it's somewhere between forty and sixty dollars or more. So it's a huge increase. I, so I couldn't promise you that there wouldn't be an increase in term, but I also don't know which option we're going to land on. I can say as a public entity, and if we were to move to public ownership, that would be a priority is to keep the cost as low as you possibly can. You can't do anything about inflation and the economy and all the other things, but you can do what you can in terms of being, uh, once you're a public owner, then you don't have to account for having to get profit for your shareholders. So we have that benefit. So we can promise that. And I think being a, a part of a regional entity, if that is where we land and what we decide, that also gives the cities a voice where there isn't one right now, you know?
Thank you.
Yeah. Sorry, no assurances.
Just concerned.
Yeah, for sure.
Is the ownership in Kellis County, is that, uh, Kellaway or is that, uh, private?
I was talking to someone about this. I don't know a ton about Kellis County, although we did look at their solid waste management plan and it's a lot leaner, simpler than ours. Um, all I can have to get back to in that, I, I believe that it is publicly owned, but don't quote me on it. I'll have to get back to Chuck.
I know that the rates are way less.
They're way less.
Way less. As long as you got woodland amber. And that, and that is the curve, I mean, I'm talking about.
At the transfer station. Yeah, but I'll look that up and find out and I'll, I'll go back to Chuck on that one.
And the transfer station, um, I think that was said years ago, maybe fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, do they have tours?
They do. And I can't remember if you have, I think you have to schedule them in advance. I've done more tours than I can even, and we've given our solid waste, uh, advisory commission tours. We'd be happy to schedule, help assist in scheduling a tour for your council, if you'd like to take a tour of all three sites or just one or however. They're interesting. I think it's good to see how it's working. It's helpful for me each time I take a tour. We just recently did a lot of different tours for different MRFs to kind of get an idea of like, how well other systems work if we're going to negotiate a new contract. And we went up to Recology in Seattle and it's huge and beautiful and we're like, wow, that's so being able to see ours. So small and old compared to like this new system that's really functioning. We're like, wow. Especially when you see the type of materials that are not getting processed or you, it's really something when you see what types of materials are people think are recyclable that are not, that are ending up in the, you know, ending up in the trash anyway. And so, yes, it speaks directly to what our outreach team needs to work on, but it also kind of speaks to what can we do better in terms of processing that material and making sure that we have the latest equipment to make sure that we can get the most material recycled.
Depending on the time, I think we would probably, we, I would be interested, I won't say we. Interested in clearing your facility again.
Yeah.
What the materials you do, recapture.
Yeah.
Go right on the belt and go back to the land.
I will give the information to Chuck and then we can have whoever's just going to coordinate.
Chuck, the state, the council.
Okay, you got, okay, okay.
Before we move on, there was noted that there would be fifteen potential sites explored for the recycling transport. Do we know, have they already been located?
No, we are, we are at the beginning, beginning, beginning stages.
Right. And North County needs anything else, like not just including.
Yeah. And I can, um, I believe, and this was, this was public at the Clark County Council Meeting, so I can provide the link. I can provide you all the exact full contract, if you like to look at the full scope of the contract we have with Parametrics to cite it. So you can read sort of each step if you're interested. I know, like, some of it's easier to kind of digest when you look at the full thing.
Okay.
There's about an eight mile radius that we're looking at and I should have the coordinates memorized. It's often like, it's this question and I don't. So I will, hold me to that next time you see me. I'll, I'll have them memorized. But it is about an eight mile radius and that's, that was cited, that was brought to our council in January as part of the scope of the contract that they were looking in this vicinity. And that's where we're at right now. We haven't gone any further. It's just sort of like what sites could be in this bubble.
And where is the bubble?
It's, um, I believe it's, I don't, I'm not even going to say, but I don't want to, I, off the top of my head, do you remember? Is it, can you, okay, thank you so much. I'm like, I don't want to, I don't want to misquote everybody. I was going to say something like, please say it wrong. I'm just going to.
We can send it over.
Yes, yes. And I, I can provide a map too, because I have it, we have it drawn on, so that if people ask me, I'd say this is where they're, yeah.
Well, okay, I'll share. Can I share? I was going to share the, uh, site that are picked out and it's in North County. And it's, uh, on the peninsula at Horseshoe Lake. And that used to be a garbage dump and the shots have lived on two eighty ninth. And they, they haul all the garbage that direction and dump it on that. And that, so that's Clark County, but it's, it's the horseshoe, the inside of horseshoe. Okay, I shared it. Hold now.
All right, it's time to conversation.
Yeah, I am.
So let's, um, talk about Saturday. And I, Chuck, do you want to, I didn't know if you wanted to. Basically, this is the overview and to the extent that I know, is we're going to be at the start of the cleanup day event. I, we've done this with you several years in a row. It always goes wonderful. You all do a wonderful job of planning and preparing and Chuck's.
Yeah. So while we just pull up the map, um, there is a slight change. We, uh, obviously we pioneered for it, well, for one, the county's solid waste, household solid waste station is actually going to be in our yard at the public work. Uh, so it's now on, um, South Eleven. Because of pioneer closure, um, we have worked with Tac Truck to, um, basically rent the, uh, the new street for a day. Uh, so if you want to get a preview of what Discovery Drive and Sixth Lane will look like, uh, they have their first lift down, uh, second lift goes in next week. So that red is, if you're coming in from the south through the west, you go up that instead of going, trying to go the long way, Wells Drive. Uh, you can turn left to get to the solid waste station. You could go straight to come to all the other stations. So it's a, it's kind of a loop, which means you can also turn, you know, turn right out of our shop to go to the rest of the stations. Those in the unincorporated Ridgefield, uh, urban growth area or what is Ridgefield Addis?
But in the county, unincorporated, but with a Ridgefield addage.
Okay. I know I got one of those.
Yeah.
So you can, um, come from High Five or wherever you're coming from, uh, in Ridgefield but not the city. Um, come down to the transfer station, turn right around, go back, drive five by a fifty-six place. So that's, that's kind of a little change. I think all the other stations are pretty much the same as they've been.
I got a Chuck question, Chuck. So are we entering the same way we did last year other than the, uh, hazardous waste?
Yeah.
Everybody will be coming.
Every country.
Pail, pail out the freeway, pass the plastic lanes, that plants, the parlor and, and heading glass.
Yes. So there'll be a bypass lane on the right or if you want to go to dog daycare. Uh, the center lane, I think is, if you're driving along and you want to find a station to dip into, the left lane then, I believe is where you stop for the various stations and, and drop things off and then you're on the way out. I think there's still a trash at the end. It's not, and that's, I'm pretty sure there's a trash at the end of that.
Chuck, is there a place to drop off paint? I know paint's a little bit of difficult disposal piece.
Weekly, yeah.
I was just considering hazardous.
Yeah. That's usually our number one collection material to do. Is, I think, I think we had an epic amount when we did our event in the center a couple of years ago. Like everybody had stored up the paint cans from their, uh, COVID, uh, home renovation.
Cans of work.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think that's this. You must agree it's still working, not bad. So if I get lost or confused, I think.
I, I would be there.
Right, right.
Council, any other questions or comments at this point? Wow. I'm more impressed that there's no questions or comments.
Me, me as well. I think we live, leave all the things solid waste management plan right now, so.
All right, so.
And we're excited to come back and have it adopted. That's going to be a real huge monumental thing for us. So this is your, I mean, right now, I just wanted to make sure that this is not part of our commenting period. It is part of the adoption period. I don't expect there will be anything in there that there's any concern about, but it is an opportunity for you to look at it. If there was, you can say, no, we're not going to adopt it because we want this changed. And so you do have that opportunity.
So I do have four things that you'll be getting me and I'll pass it on to Steve and Steve will pass it on to council to follow up on. Come to next.
Yep.
Well, thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Very thrilled and I do appreciate the, the knowledge basically you brought with you because it's very helpful.
Oh, great. I'll, I'll, I'll quiz all of you when I come back.
I'm still working on that.
You and me both.
Okay, thank you. I guess that's it. So this study session is.
Oh.